I received the minutes from PEG, they were very nicely detailed. Any questions on the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dan and you, ayeing?
Aye.
Karen, do you have anything to say other than when we get to the budget?
I love the five o'clock meeting.
Okay, that's a repeat of something.
I make sure I get that in the minutes.
No, I'm good.
Is it very public here?
You have it up on your agenda.
Let's get right to the budget.
I'll get a joke, because you're going to find out.
Oh, yeah.
Get one.
Oh, it's trying.
Karen, do you want to make a statement on the budget to, you know, going beyond your message that you gave us, the nice message of the budget? Or do you want us to just get into it?
I think just getting into it, I think you have a lot to cover.
I wanted to briefly, in a general discussion way, touch on revenues. We don't have any approval authority over revenues. We do, for the purpose of the meeting, I just wanted to let you know, from my analysis of it, everybody is saying, "Well, what a great budget, we're able to bring people back," et cetera, et cetera. I apologize, I will turn that off. There's no pie in the sky lottery winning here. As I look at the revenues, they are, and Melissa, please correct me if I'm wrong, but everything, I'm looking at the general page under revenues. We have had some increases, but they're normal increases, nothing major. We do show under state grants, for instance, real estate and property tax revenue is up, what did I say, $797,000, but that's mostly prop two and a half. Two and a half percent of property taxes, for instance, can be increased by the, by the city every year, and we do do that.
So that doesn't need to be a vote?
No. That's by law what the tax rate can be increased by. We're held to the two and a half.
The two and a half keeps us strict, so if we want to raise three, we'd have to ask the people, we'd have to ask the citizens. And there might be some new growth, I just wanted to ask, was there any new growth, or a lot, or minor amount? I assume a minor.
Increase in new growth.
Just a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is always nice.
Do you both understand new growth, it's new property, renovations, et cetera? Okay, good. Cherry sheet was up a little bit, that's money in both regular aid and chapter 70 money. So generally, there's over a million dollars, and local receipts is up a little bit. But they're not significant. But it is, those three categories, just those three, give us about a million dollars in new dollars. But of course, we have mandated increases, such as our union employees getting raises, or healthcare, I don't know, we have to go into it, how, where things, expenses are up, but...
You will be going into it.
Yeah. I'm just, just saying that I didn't see anything in revenue that showed dramatic change to me, except for the real estate property tax, but that's because it's a large amount, and two and a half percent of it is a large amount. So, does, Karen, you or Melissa want to add anything to that?
Right, and just looking at your, you know, look at your budget figures from year to year, and you see how they increase. So, you know, like with the total budget, when you look at the grand total of the budget from each year, you know, it increases slightly from each year, and, and as you know, the expenses increase a lot more than slightly.
Well, right, and usually a lot more than two and a half percent.
Right.
Basically, what I wanted to say is, from my point of view, these are realistic figures based on not guesses, not pie in the sky, not, you know, hope for dollars, they're real dollars. They are based on the mayor and the finance director's education in this area, where they know what the revenue should be. So, that's all I wanted to say. Do the councilors have any questions?
I do have a question, excellent. When you're preparing for receipts and that sort of thing, how, how do you categorize, how do you know in advance, this is going to sound like a really dumb question, how do you know in advance things like Medicaid reimbursement? How do you know?
That's on the cherry sheet.
That, okay, so that...
Oh, no, not the Medicare one. Where's my cherry sheet?
Medicaid.
Medicaid. Okay.
Because it was high, then it was low, and then it's kind of high again. How do you, how do you plan for that?
Well, Medicaid reimbursement is, you know, pretty consistent based on what's been submitted, been submitted by the school department. But basically, we do all local receipts based on last year and what we, you know, what came in last year, unless we know of the dramatic change that, that it should come in the next year. And I believe the Medicare reimbursement went down...
It's Medicaid, actually.
Well, the Medicaid reimbursement didn't go down as much as we estimated it would have, because something had changed and we were unsure of how, if we were going to get the same amount we had gotten in prior years. And we have gotten the sixty-five already this year, so we feel comfortable that we'll get the sixty-five next year.
Okay.
So, looking at actuals from previous years, you know, and, and when we estimate, just like, you know, your fees, your building permits, and all those things, we look at what we are at actually, and then we don't overestimate. We try, you know, we are not only frugal, we're always trying to be, you know, we don't overestimate anything, because that could be...
My experience with...
We're conservative.
With, yes, very conservative revenue estimates, so that if you get more money, great.
Right.
But that way, you're not hurt at the, and having to cut a budget in the middle of the year.
That's exactly right.
Like when the state decides, "Oh, we're not going to give you as much money as we thought we would," but let's hope they don't do that. Anything else on that? Okay, let's move into education then. And I'll turn the floor over to the superintendent.
Okay.
You can, I've looked at this, and very happy for you, very happy the way this whole thing has worked out.
Very happy, and this is, okay, and Dale probably, we can keep that there, too. Did everybody get a copy of this as well, though?
Those, and actually, normally, these just come to us for budget, like proposals. It's the budget itself that they're going over, not so much the proposal.
Just to make sure the councilors know, we don't have authority to change anything in that budget.
Right, so what's in front of them is the budget itself.
Okay.
We can only...
I noticed that Dan has his.
Yeah, but I want it, just for my purposes, I wanted to know.
Yeah, so, the other name.
I might as well.
Oh, you have yours as well, great, okay.
The last four years.
Yeah.
But the other departments don't provide them to the councilors, they come to us for our budget meetings.
Okay, so...
But we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't disappreciate the other ones, but I appreciate, because we don't have, it's a large part of the budget, and we have to have knowledge in case a constituent wants to know, and I want to be able to pull it up early.
Well, it is, and that's why we try to put more information into it about, you know, what the spending, how the money is spent, and, you know, what contributes to our budget. So, one thing, of course, is, that fluctuates is choice in charter. And there was a page in this budget document that showed that, and the good news is that our...
Where is that? Can you tell me the page?
It's in tab two. It's the first page in tab two.
And this is in your budget, not my budget?
In my budget, right. And you don't have it in front of you, but I'll just talk about it.
Okay.
So, I think the good news is that we've worked very hard to, you know, to improve the reputation of our schools. Our schools are excellent, but we've suffered from a perception about our schools that wasn't accurate, so we've worked very hard to shift that perception, and I think we're seeing some results from that. Our choice out numbers are decreasing, and our choice in numbers are increasing. So that means that less money is leaving our district for students who are going to choice to other, other schools, and more money is coming in. So we're very pleased about that. However, once Hilltown Charter moved into our district, the charter numbers have gone up dramatically. So they, we had fifty-one students leaving for charter school in 2012, and in 2016, we had ninety-six students leaving for charter school. And charter school is more expensive for us than around $10,000 versus $5,000 for choice out. So that's been, that's the not-so-good news. We also have had some fluctuation in vocational tuition, so we are required to provide vocational education to any students who want it and who are accepted into a vocational school. We, Career Tech in West Springfield is our vocational affiliate, our primary vocational affiliate, so we send all of our kids there unless they're, they want a program that doesn't exist at Career Tech, and then we send them to Smith. Now, at a substantially greater cost to us.
Smith is greater than the other one?
Absolutely. So, in, in this current school year, the tuition for Smith Vocational was $17,556 per student, plus an additional $4,190 if this student had an, has an IEP, an educational plan, special educational.
You're up $200,000 from last year.
Yes. And, and then for Career Tech, the tuition is $10,345. Now, that's because they do their educational academic part of their program at the high school, and then we bus them to C-Tech for their vocational program. And even with the transportation, it's less expensive for us to send them to C-Tech, which is a brand-new facility, and so, you know, that works better for us financially. And also, we like having our kids in our high school, you know, for part of the day, keeping them there with us, so, so that's...
And that's only if they want something that you can't provide at East Hampton?
It's Career Tech.
A career.
For vocational.
Then they go to Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Councilor Smith, we are looking at what is the school department's proposed budget. I will send to the finance committee, I don't know if you've got that. They can make one available to you if you wish to have it, it is a little more detailed.
I'm just, I'm just here to listen.
Okay. Just want to get on what we're looking at.
I just didn't have my key, I don't know if that needs to be opened.
Okay, but you do have the school, you do have the budget in front of you, right?
I'm trying to...
She, she has your proposed budget, I, we're looking, yeah.
I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Okay, so, then the other thing I just wanted to talk about, I guess two other things, that the recent budget trends, and I think you're probably all pretty aware, that we've had to make cuts in our budget every year that I can remember. And so, this year, we were very pleased when the mayor, you know, approved our budget as, as it was written. And this will allow us to return six positions, and they're not necessarily the same six positions that we lost, some of them are, but some are ones that we have need for now, that we didn't have need for in years past. So we are putting more languages back into middle school. We have a behavior analyst, this is a new position, who will work throughout the district to help us with the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our, our students. We have a classroom position, second grade, at the elementary school. We have a design tech teacher at the high school. We lost our design tech teacher two years ago, so we're really excited about putting that position back in and getting to use the fabrication labs the way they should be used. And we have a speech and language pathologist assistant position to help with the caseload of students who need speech and language services at Center and Peppin Schools. Did I get all of them? Yes, okay. So we're very pleased about that. And, you know, clearly, the largest part of our budget is instructional services that pay, you know, our, that's the salaries for our, our teachers and our instructional staff. And, and that increases every year because of our contractual obligations.
Did they get one percent last year?
They got one percent, one and a half, I don't know.
One and a half.
Was their contract, was their contract?
I think it was one, one and a half, and this year it'll be two.
So they have another year on the current contract?
Yes, this current year.
They were also a year on the contract.
Yes.
That when...
The upcoming budget year is the final year of the contract.
That's right.
So this FY seventeen budget is the final year of the contract.
That's right. It'll be in negotiations again this year. And then I'm just going to ask Dale if she will give you a little background on what she's done since she took over as Director of Business Services, this is her first year. We had a, we contracted with the management system before, they came in one day a week, and then were always available to us. But with the prospect of a possibility of a new building, new construction, or, and even just the MSBA process, I determined that it just wasn't going to work for our district to continue with that model, so we parted very amicably and still are in contact, and they still offer contracting services to us if we needed them. But we were very fortunate to get Dale, who was a superintendent and pioneer, up until we hired her for the director...
You were superintendent before this?
She was.
Yes.
So it's like you have two superintendents for them.
Previous to that, I was the assistant superintendent there. I was in the Pioneer District for almost twenty-two years.
That's good.
And she did all of the, and she's also certified business manager, so...
I'm going to make this statement, and, because I've always felt that this is a long time coming. I think a one-day-a-week business manager for a sixteen million, seventeen million dollar budget was a little much to understand. I think this is a much better, thank you. Thank you for applying for the job, thank you for changing the job, because I think it's much better.
Well, and as you know...
Picks the pressure off the city's finance director, it's just...
As you know, you know, it was difficult to make that decision before this because of the budgets and, and having to cut personnel, and so we tried to make do. And I do have to thank the mayor and, and Melissa for their help, because, you know, we transferred a position into the city, which actually works better in terms of the management of it, the payroll person. And that freed up additional funds, which enabled me to hire this position. So it was a, a real collaborative effort, and...
It wasn't an overnight decision.
No, no, we, we spent a lot of time talking about...
The other, aside from budget, the other place I think that this position will play, pay real dividends for the city is the upcoming building project, because there's so much coordination relative to that, that falls to the school department, and now there's a person that can be dedicated toward it, which is great.
And Dale's already done a good, good deal of work on this, and, you know, it's, it's been great. And so, I think knowing that we were headed into a building project, the mayor and Melissa both, again, were tremendously supportive in helping me try to get to this point where we had a full-time business manager. So, with that, I'm going to let Dale just talk to you a little bit about the process that she used this year, which is different from the process that we'd used in the past, but it's worked very well for us.
So I came aboard on July 1st, and very quickly, we started working on, to prepare ourselves to budget effectively for the upcoming year. And the place that we did that is with, with the district leadership team, the principals and program heads, the administrative special education. We started early, we started right away, we spent a lot of time really trying to, and some of this was me needing to learn the system, was, we spent a lot of time trying to understand what our needs were, and what our history had been relative to spending in the various spending categories over the last several years. We spent a lot of time aligning funding categories more tightly with spending needs, so that in the budget, which is a, the school budget, which is massive, that the money was in the right place for the anticipated needs. It had fallen somewhat out of alignment in that regard. We talked, spent a lot of time talking about what we considered essential services in a school budget, and what our priorities were for serving students better than we were. I think we spent a lot of time talking about our shared responsibility for the budget, and, and some of that was making some changes to the way the, the budget was organized, so it made more sense that people understood what their budget was and where the money was, and could therefore monitor it and manage it in a better fashion. We simplified the budget structure where we could, and the documentation, so that reports made sense for people. And through it all, really tried to focus on clarity and transparency. And then the other activity that was sort of going on at the same time was really actively pursuing efficiencies, spending efficiencies in the budget. So renegotiating some of the contracts that we could, postage meter contract is an example.
You mean vendor contracts you're talking about?
Vendor contracts, yes. The copiers were on the brink of letting all new copier contracts, and there'll be some considerable savings over time in those. There's a brand-new administrator of special education in the district, she started July 1st as well. I think she's done a really terrific job at finding places where students with special needs might be able to be served better within the district, add some savings, and has put those structures and programs into place for next year. Some of the new positions that Nancy talked about are aimed directly at that objective, is serving kids better here, so that their needs don't rise to a level that we need to put them out at a, at a more expensive placement, because we truly believe that kids are served best in their home community. And there's no doubt that they're char, they're served more cost-effectively in their home community. So, this was a process that the leadership team engaged in right from the very beginning of the school year, so by the time we started to build the budget, we really had developed a lot of common understanding about it, and we had also simplified some of the structure for the next year. And at that point, the finance subcommittee of the school committee got involved and reviewed each of the location budgets, made suggestions, there were some changes that came out about, as a result of that process. And then finally, resulted in the draft budget, the proposed budget that was put forward. And the budget that was put forward is an essential services budget, and by that, we mean it has all services necessary to serve East Hampton children well next year, based on the students that we know that are coming. And how that, an essential service budget might be looked at as different than a level service budget, is there were some places we reduced, because frankly, we could. And then we repurposed that money to use in another place where it was needed.
That's the spending efficiency.
Yes, yes, yes.
See, now, to me, that's because you have the time to spend and find to own the budget, and find those spending efficiencies, and I, again, think that's wonderful, because without you guys asking for the right amount of money, the mayor couldn't give you in the past. What I didn't like about it was, we always would look at the budget, and there was a certain amount of money asked for by the school board or the school department, and then the mayor had to cut it. If it was a six, seven percent increase, even though there was a three percent increase, the perception is we're cutting the school budget, and you had to cut people. This is a much better process, because the perception is the schools are moving ahead, they're doing better, they are improving, and, politics is all about perception. Perception is going to be, in my view, much better for the schools, when you don't have to use the word "cut" in any discussion.
Couldn't be more.
The only other thing that I would say is, if you were to look at our budget document, it does look quite different, and the structure that we used is a location structure, so that it's really clear what it takes to run each location of the budget, and the person that manages it, it's, it's very transparent and clear for them, and I think it will help building administrators and program administrators, it already is working, to serve a more effective role in managing and monitoring their own budgets.
True.
Because they own them and can understand them, yeah.
Well, I have only a couple of general questions, looking at the, I, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I am done, yeah, yeah.
I wonder, and this is just me, I should know this, and I know it's one-time spending, but I'm looking at the general budget, where we talk about, it's a page, that's my particular PDF, education, total functions for education, it says, last year, the original budget was $16,19500, but the actual adjusted budget is $17,290. Is that one-time spending?
Where are you, Dan?
So, so...
It, it's in this, it's in the PDF, under the top category, education, there is a cover sheet.
It has to do with the fact that the school department has a holdover, a good amount of salaries...
Okay, there you go.
Before the summer, because teachers have the, the choice to. They've earned all their money by the end of the fiscal year, but they have a choice to pay that.
So that money is actually acquired.
So that's a big portion of that number, where it shows up as adjusted budget, because the money was held from a prior year.
I just needed to be reminded, I remember that now, okay.
I want, but I just want, I didn't want to see the page that he's looking at.
Dan actually shared it with me.
This, this page is what I get, I don't think it's in there. It's a, it's a general thing.
No, it's probably the evening.
I mean, when you go into the school department budget, it breaks it down.
It's in there. Yeah, it says, it says...
It's in the, is it in the printed copy?
It's in the general...
I can't find it. It's on the page one, and it's also on page fourteen. My page is six.
So you're looking at the summary, so just go to the school department...
Oh, they're in the summary.
Although if, if it's detailed, it'll, it'll have salaries, and then it'll have expenses, and then it will have a third, second screen, like we have in every department, holdovers, and you'll see that almost $700,000 or more than $700,000 of that is, is the salaries.
Is this where it is?
See, it says, yes, the third line down, school department holdovers, fourth line.
This is where he's looking.
$747,000, okay. That explains that.
Okay, they were in the summary.
Okay. The only other question I had is, I remember, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, you got hit really hard with out-of-district special ed tuition costs. Was there a change in that? My concern is, if it goes down a lot in one year, how do you protect yourself from it going up again? I, I just need to know, where are we with special ed? I didn't delve into this as much as I should, to find it.
Yeah, well, you've been working really closely with our special ed director.
So, I think the answer is, is, over the course of this year, we've been able to move some students from out-of-district placements back in, so there has...
That saves a lot of money, doesn't it?
That has been a, it's, it's a really significant savings. That has realized some savings, but you're, you're absolutely right, with special ed, you, you can never cut it so tight that you don't give yourself a little...
For the next year, when somebody comes?
Cushion for something that could happen. One student moves in, and it could be a $200,000 placement. So what we really try to do is really understand well what we anticipate our needs to be, and also allow us enough wiggle room, if you will, to deal with something if it does come up, because something will, we just don't know what it is.
That's what I was alluding to, and where does that wiggle room come from? Do you have to come back to the mayor and the council to ask for more money if you get a hit at the $200,000 out of, I mean, what would you do? Because that, to me, is a serious issue.
Well, we've got some, we've got some contingency within the special ed.
So you have some contingency, okay.
There is some, to deal with what we would expect to be a normal amount of ebb and flow.
Okay.
Beyond that, we would need to look, I think, first, to the, to the rest of the operating budget, to see if there was any, anything that changed, and, and, and finally, we get circuit breaker every year.
Yeah, what, how are we with that?
Reimbursement, and...
Is that down again from the year prior?
Actually, it went up.
So that's a good thing.
It went up.
And that's unusual, isn't it?
That helped us as well.
What is circuit breaker?
Ah.
Want me to answer that?
Sure.
Good luck. What page would that be on here?
Circuit breaker is a reimbursement program offered by the Department of Education that helps districts deal with extraordinary special ed costs. So they, every year, come up with an amount that they say a district can spend per person for a special ed student without any assistance, and I think this year was somewhere around $41,000.
Well, this...
And then if the expense per student exceeds that, they reimburse the district for those amounts in excess of the $41,000 at a percentage, and this year it was around seventy percent.
The percentage can change from year to year.
Yeah, it's all budget-dependent.
In this page, right here, it says $332,000, as opposed to $175,000 last year. Circuit breaker money is approved, is that what I'm reading?
That's what was, what was applied, used.
Used.
That's what was used, it's not necessarily what we received.
This says FY seventeen proposed.
What we will use of the circuit breaker.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yes.
I understand, all right.
Yes.
And does that make it into the budget, as a line item anymore?
No. So, like, there are reimbursements, like, things like that.
Like, there are reimbursements, like, things like that, that just go directly to the school.
Okay, that we're not.
Just like, what is it, choice, choice tuition, charter tuition?
Choice and.
Yeah, those go directly to the school, those don't.
Charter does not.
So there are things that go directly to the school for their uses.
That has no bearing on the budget?
Well, it's not funds that we can use on the city side.
Okay.
You know, they're specifically earmarked, same as chapter seventy.
Where it has.
If you look at the, what they provide in the school, they'll tell you where their funding sources are, because their budget is significantly larger than the appropriation they ask for from the city, and part of that is funding on circuit breaker.
Okay.
It is one of the major categories.
Exactly what I was gonna say. So where it has an impact is on our budget. Because we anticipated applying so much.
How much is your budget? Twenty-three million? And then we're giving fifteen and change?
Well.
Fifteen and a half, or something like that?
Fifteen, five, four, nine, two, six.
And that's not the net school. If you add the benefits and everything else to it, the total net education spending is twenty million. But that doesn't include these things. When we say net education spending of twenty million six seventy-nine, that's what's coming out of the city side. That includes benefits, insurances, et cetera.
And then in addition to that, there's circuit breaker reimbursement, there's choice revenue, there's grants.
Yeah, and it's chapter seventy.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. So we have fifteen, five, forty-nine, two, twenty-six in the budget?
That's the appropriation that the school is getting, the exact amount.
From the city.
From the entire budget, from our thirty-nine million dollars. Forty-million-dollar, that.
They get fifteen and a half.
Exactly.
So then, don't answer this question. So then, to get to twenty million six seventy-nine in total net education spending, there's a five-million differential?
So, but that's different from circuit breaker. So a lot of those costs in net school spending, if you look at the net school spending sheet, is broken down in costs to cover the fact that my office does payroll for the school department. So they pay a percentage of.
Your salary.
Well, they don't pay it, but that's how we say, there's a cost. They will stand alone, they'd have to hire.
And so they have to fund that somehow?
No, they don't. It's just a reporting mechanism for general fund operations that support the school, but are not directly a part of their budget that they.
Okay. That counts towards net school spending.
So this is just a number that says how much you're spending, but for purposes of this budget, the allocation is part, is fifteen, five.
That's exactly right.
Right, and then, in addition to that, you know, because like, we're funding my portion, my salary in my office, but in the net school spending formula, it says, how much does city?
Two percent of you, and three percent of somebody else.
Right. And then their health insurance, which is a big number, and this kind of thing. But then in addition to that, there are direct revenue sources that never pass through the general fund, they go directly to the school, and those are circuit breaker, choice, and grants received. So that's.
Hopefully grants received. We love to receive them.
Yeah.
Okay. It's pretty complicated. Okay.
So the way I understand it, has always been that, we give them a fifteen, five, which the school department and the school board spends as they wish, that's theirs, to divide up. The five million one hundred and thirty is the cost of the school department to the city of East, the general fund, separate from the schools. That includes payroll costs, it includes benefits, it includes insurances, healthcare, all of that. So if a taxpayer asks, how much do you spend on schools? It's not fifteen million, it's twenty million. That's what I tell them, and that's part of the old. That doesn't even include, though, the money they get separate from our taxation in our general fund, which is the circuit breaker. And then, does that include chapter seventy? Is chapter seventy something?
Chapter seventy runs through the general fund.
It does run through the general fund, that's what I thought.
That comes along with.
And as does, if we have some tuition in and other things, that comes through the.
Well, choice, choice in goes directly to the school department.
That goes directly, okay.
Charter in goes to the general fund.
We don't have charter in, we have.
I don't?
Charter out.
Charter out? Well, charter, charter in and charter out go to the general fund. Choice in goes directly to, I have charter, the, I'm in charter sheet, there's charter in.
Oh, it's in our district?
I don't understand why.
That's interesting.
It's the reimbursement, you know, the seventy-five.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, yeah, the reimbursement.
Okay.
So, and then, choice and charter out is all part of the general fund expense. And that's part of why this number is so big, is those are huge numbers, the charter, charter out, which is a cost of supporting students in the district that the school department doesn't see.
We're supporting students at another school, is what that means.
Which is what we've been working pretty nonstop on for at least the last three years, easily.
We're trying to fix that.
So, you know, and those are the improvements that you have started to see in the choice, which is a huge improvement, any improvement, instead of going the other way.
I have a quick question. With the budget line for the world languages, can you just speak a little to who will be receiving world languages at this point in the middle school?
We haven't made a definitive decision on this yet, but at this point, it's looking like it would be an exploratory, like we used to have, so that our students will get an experience with a couple of different languages. And I'm not sure how far in the grade levels it's going to go at this point.
That's the one question I keep getting asked, whether or not someone who is in eighth grade next year, they'll be able to be a part of that, or if this will only cover the incoming class.
Oh, no, it wouldn't, it would be more the upper classes, I believe. But that's a decision that, you know, I'll be making with the building principal. Of course, that's still in the works. So when we get the definitive answer, I'll share with you.
Oh, really great, thanks.
So I have no questions beyond what I asked. I'm looking at the school department's breakout, which is our page fifty-four on the PDF. I see nothing, everything, the holdovers is right there, that explains that. Should've known, and other charges. Any questions? Purchase of services, Medicaid, school supplies, that's where I am, under personnel services.
I have a question that's kind of not fair. It's about future budgets, not this one.
Definitely not fair.
Looked ahead to keeping these five and a half positions passed?
And we didn't put positions into place that we didn't think we could sustain. We were very conservative when we made these decisions, and very thoughtful about it. So we did it with the understanding and intent that we would be able to sustain these positions.
I knew you'd do it thoughtfully, but.
With the intent, intentionally as well.
That was the finance subcommittee of the school committee, that was very important to them.
Well, it's never our intent as a city a whole to put in positions and then remove them.
No, we didn't want to get ourselves into that position, because, and I think we've mentioned here tonight, you know, this, we want this to look like the beginning of the growth of our schools, you know, positive growth stage in our schools. And we want to keep that going, that image going, and that perception in the community. So we're very intentional and careful about that, we believe.
Good.
One question, and this might be to you, Melissa, that transportation and comms serve? Is that, what is that?
Can you break that out? Because transportation of students is expensive, and that's a big number. And I picked the, I picked the number out of what the school department provided to me. But transportation is not considered net spending, it's considered non-net spending. So you have, we have to separate it, so I went from, you know, what I interpreted on there to be the non-net number for the school, and put it in the budget. Now, they can move that up and down as it's really applied.
So that's part of the fifteen million?
Yeah.
It's not, okay.
It is.
Yeah, but it's not part of the, it's not part of the, I believe it's, why I think for some reason it's sixty-nine.
Well, because it is.
Yeah.
Because it is.
If you look at the summary page, which I started with.
It's sixteen million five one six three oh six, because that part does include the transportation, which is what it's asking.
Yeah, so, but the transportation is not considered net school spending, so we do have to separate it. When they're putting their budget together, that's a bill that the school department pays to bus students. And it's, in this other formula that we have to do, it, you have to separate it.
Okay, so it's technically aligned to transportation, so it's not just nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, they can spend any way they want it, like their fifteen and a half million?
Well, actually, actually, they can spend it any way they want it. The reason it's separated is because I believe I have, that's what they put in their, I mean, did I interpret that correctly when I did the budget?
This is what she's talking about.
So, so it just, they can move it up and down, however, it actually needs to be applied. In order to guess as to how much money, that was what I took from here, as their non-net.
So they're then getting sixteen and a half million allocated?
The bottom line is exactly, right, so, exactly what you asked. The transportation added to that is exactly that, the sixteen five one six three oh six.
All right.
Anything else? Sure? Camera, Joe?
I just want to commend you for the budget, and having a lot of kids in the school district, and being here when we've had to make those cuts, it's really exciting to be on the other side of that. And I've personally seen all the ways that you have very intentional projects with the children, and intentional support for the children, even with the cuts. I'm really excited to see what it'll look like without the cuts.
We're very excited.
We are too.
And, you know, and I think it is a result of the really strong leadership team I have now, but also the collaboration with the mayor and the city departments.
It's been wonderful.
So it's, you know.
It's just gonna make a difference in the perception of.
It's one city.
Absolutely. And I like, it's huge to me to hear the word essential services versus level services. People need to understand what that means, and we need to harp on it as much as we can. Essential services prioritizes the students, level services may not work, and try and match what we did, and usually we can't, in prior years. This is much better. I'm gonna read a motion to approve this, unless there's any other questions. This is the motion that matches what Melissa sent to us for the final. I move that the finance committee recommend to the full council to raise and appropriate the sum of sixteen million five hundred, sixteen thousand three hundred and six dollars for the various departments listed under section three, schools, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and finance, as recommended by the mayor, period. That's my motion. Second, assuming you're all right with that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance committee voted three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a question, Karen? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was close.
Good night. On the, there's.
I gotta find my journal. Section five, human services. So I'm looking at the summary page first. Human services, I'm looking at the summary page first, and then we'll go into each individual.
And what page do you show for that?
The summary pages, if I understand it, on the printed report, are separated out, right?
There, I got it.
You got it.
Page nine?
It says page nine, that's right. There you go. Okay, now I know what I'm doing. I have, okay, seventeen, this is what I'm looking at. I click on that, and I get the summary, and then you go into the page number.
All right, I'm looking at this number.
Okay, I'm looking at the number up in the corner. So it is eighteen in the PDF, I see what you're saying, yes. But page nine, printed report.
This is the hardest thing we're gonna do, is figure out what page on the PDF we are.
Well, yeah.
Save karma. Okay, we're in recess for a moment.
Oh, for God's sakes. Ah, he just got into a car accident.
Again?
No. Not by cars.
I didn't think, I didn't think any cars left for him to just go.
Wipe your computer.
Oh, that's fine.
The car was still back on. It's a monster. The car was still back on.
At least it wasn't me.
So absorbed.
I, my family is actually doing the strengthening families with the schools right now. And so, since it looks like Chris has to go to the hospital, I have to go take care of the other kids.
Oh, jeez.
No, I think.
Someone's hurt? Chris has to go to the hospital.
Chris is the kind of kid that will always be like, I gotta go to the hospital, so.
Yo, you gotta call him.
Oh, Chris is gonna call.
Here, please.
Okay.
Thanks for letting us know about the door.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Hopefully, it's still unlocked. Either they're left open all night, or they're locking people out of the meeting.
And, yes, Father.
Just in case. Okay, in general.
Page nine. It's right at the beginning.
Look, here's seven.
Wait at the beginning.
Oh, the beginning.
Yeah.
Page nine.
It's under one, and these are all the summaries, so go to seven.
Go to page nine. Looking at this, there's only a, there's a three-thousand-dollar difference between the recommended, requested stage and the recommended stage, mostly in the board of health. So we'll go into the board of health, but is there a general statement why that's lower? Or should we just look at the actual budget?
I think you'll probably, I think it'd be easier when you look right at the actual budget.
Okay.
Like where her requests were.
It looks like one of the biggest was in professional services.
Right, she had, you know, she's thinking if she needs to prepare for academics, epidemics in the future, things like that, unforeseen things that might come her way, like Zika, and those type of things. And we figured, those are really where something extraordinary comes on, we, that's where we use our reserve.
Yeah, our reserve or emergency funds, yes. I totally agree.
So, that, again, being extremely frugal, we tend to not put funds in there that are not definitely anticipated, and when something unexpected comes up, that's when we fund them. So we did have that conversation during the budget meetings.
I see no major significant change in the line items, other than perhaps that, which isn't significant to me.
Office supplies, I mean, seriously. Big drop in office supplies. Is she gonna buy a new printer or something?
Well, I think there were some renovations requested, you know, to renovate the office, and.
That's like walls and things.
We configure, and.
Oh, you mean from her request?
Right, so those are wonderful ideas, but sometimes, you know, not priorities on our end.
Yep.
You pretty much leveled that, all of the lines across there. Okay. Salaries are up a little bit.
I believe that.
Is that a step?
That's a step.
Step increase?
Right, and then.
Two of the three employees in that department have steps.
Is the fifty-five thousand just the health agent?
Yes, that's, and then there's the clerical underneath, part-time clerical.
And part-time nurse, okay.
Right.
All right. I don't have any further questions on the board of health. Anyone, guys, anybody? Council on Aging?
And I did, while you, when you get to Linda, well, when you.
Council on Aging, that's where I am right now.
Right, I would like to say that Linda is somebody, she's a wonderful director, as you all know, and I know that you're aware that she usually attends every finance subcommittee meeting when it's her budget. She has a medical situation, and she's not able to attend. And wanted me to relay that information to you. And I told her that I would, that you would totally understand, but she's not here.
Can I, I assume the full-time supervisory, that's an increase due to a step increase? How many employees are under full-time permanent?
There's a couple on there.
Well, the, I gotta find her first.
It's page eighty-three?
Okay, so the, the, the full-time supervisory would be the director.
Right, and she got a step increase.
Yes. And then under the full-time permanent is, do you have our requests, because there would be.
I'm just curious why it went down, I assume it might be.
So, um, full-time supervisor is executive director.
Right.
And then the full-time other is.
Transportation coordinator, which I call the van driver.
An outreach worker.
So when the salary goes down, is that because we have new employee that's entry level, or something like that?
Actually, we did have someone retire last fiscal year that had been here a very long time.
So a new salary.
New person who has gotten nothing but glowing or his reviews.
But they started a lower salary than the guy that retired, so.
Typically.
He's talking about the difference between the seventy-fourth, seventy-two.
So that answers that?
Yes.
Everything else looks leveled?
No, no positions were cut. It's like, know what you want, you know, you wanna be sure.
It's only two thousand, if you cut a position, it'd be a lot more than two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Very happy about, that's another department that we're very happy about, obtaining that van at no cost to the city when the friends bought the first one for close to seventy thousand. So to obtain a brand-new one at no cost to the city is, is allowing them to do things that we've been wanting to do for years to outreach so that we can transport, you know, patients to Northampton, to doctor's appointments, and, you know, blood work, different things like that. So the, the plan is with that, is to expand the transportation, which is, to me, something we've been wanting to do for a long time.
Does that, what falls under in-state travel?
Mileage.
For?
If you, like, say you have to go to a different meeting, you're required to go to a different, you know, out of your own building.
So what would?
Or like a seminar, if you're, like, you have a seminar, you need to maintain, it might be in Worcester, and you use your own vehicle.
But, but.
What?
Council on Aging is higher than most departments, because it also covers the outreach of going home visits.
Right, but it's their mileage.
There's a lot of mileage there, it's more than other departments.
They're not, people think they're volunteers, they're not, they, which, they are a huge part of a volunteer basis, but that's what, they don't get paid for their services, but they get mileage, so to go.
This is for the outreach worker. Brandon. Right, but that, that one, he does home visits. That's not the drivers, who are my parents.
Right.
So he's doing, is he doing like?
He's the outreach worker, so he visits people in their house.
How do you, and, do you need any services?
Yeah, or brings, provides them.
Can we help you with Medicare, papering, things like that?
There's a lot of people that need outreach, it's a very important position.
Because they can't come in to the building.
Right, or sometimes we get calls, Linda would get calls about them or.
Can you just check up on somebody?
Well, it might be a little bit more serious than that, it might be calls from the fire department or the health agent that this person you might wanna contact, so. It's a crucial position, outreach, that's exactly what it is.
That person falls into the personnel services, and then they charge their mileage, or they are volunteer, but they charge mileage?
No, he's not a volunteer. That's a full-time position.
They fall into the upper portion of this.
Right, but, but then, you know, they use, they're using their own vehicles.
Right.
So we give them the mileage.
We don't let them take the van. Sorry about that.
Anything else on, see what? Veteran Services. I don't see anything that's unusual under miscellaneous professional. We are maintaining him as part of a joint operation with other communities, that's still the same?
Yes.
The other communities are agreeing to continue that, of course.
We have a veterans council.
Okay, great.
Between two other communities, I'm sorry.
No, no, go.
No, that's it.
My question was really dumb. It's about to be. How is it that you're gonna keep postage at the same level?
John doesn't do a lot of mailings. He probably has the same type of, he doesn't do, as you can see, a hundred and five dollars, he doesn't do a lot of mailings.
I noticed under benefits that were way up, and that's because we have more veterans, like, we were, we just had to do supplemental on that. So the first line is up three twenty-five.
We took that into consideration, instead of.
So you increased that because you knew, you were gonna ask, yeah?
We know we just came back to you, and it kind of is, seems to be a yearly thing, where this time of year, the benefits are depleted. So we bumped it up anticipating that they would be probably, you know, hoping to, hoping to get by. But again, if they are increased, then we'll be back.
Is there any percentage reimbursement on those?
Seventy-five.
So, is it seventy-five percent of this three forty?
Of whatever we actively spend.
Okay, right.
What we pay out to the, what he pays out to the veterans.
Eligible things.
Yes, and he doesn't pay out until, like, he's always sure it's an eligible payout before he does it. And he receives seventy-five, well, seventy-five percent reimbursement.
That comes back to the general fund, right?
It's on the charity. It's.
It's anticipated.
They're in arrears all the time, so when we're getting it, it's from the fire.
But you budget based on the fact that you will get seventy-five percent of what you spend?
We budget based on what the state says they're willing to send us on the charity.
Okay, that makes sense.
What you'll end up getting.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, anything else on veteran services?
No.
Survival Center? I have survival, oh, I'm not, I'm not.
Not on the thing anymore.
That's it, I'm, I'm, that's under a different budget, my apologies. Is it? Northampton Survival Center is under this, but it's no longer funded. We don't have any money in it anymore, right? So why do you take that off the budget?
It rolls off and it doesn't show up.
You can see how it's got a couple more years to go, instead of just ripping out the page.
Right. Okay, so that's all on human services, any other questions on it?
She does, just so you know, she's been, Heidi is very proactive in trying to work with the city on, you know, future grants when we're eligible for CDBG grants. So she has come in and spent a lot of time talking to me and, you know, and the grant department on, you know, how she could be part of our CDBG grant requests. That's where she obtains her money with, with they, not related, but what she does is she receives ten thousand from, from Northampton, from their CDBG, that's how she's funded there, the rest of it is, you know, fundraising on her own, so.
Hang on, what's the likelihood of us being CDBG eligible?
Well, we've applied, well, we are eligible, but the getting approved is the problem, like, once they re-graded us, put us in a, in a different tier, it's extremely, extremely difficult, because we're a large group of people are fighting for a small pot of money, so we will be hearing, we did put in an application this year. And what we, we have the public hearings, and what the, what the outreach was on that is what I think is a fantastic thing. First of all, the restructuring of different areas, which you've seen, which happened over in Admiral and all of that, but also housing rehab, which is for, you know, I, I think that's just one of the things that just provides, you know, so much assistance, and then is, it's, it's a fantastic program, and there's a long list of applicants for it.
And what was it that pushed us into a different category with our median, median incomers?
Yes.
Really, wow.
What is CDBG?
Community Development Block Grant. But there are entitled, in communities that are entitlement communities, which they, they are, they are received every year. We used to be able to apply, now we can only apply every two years, you know, so it's, it's, it's very difficult.
Northampton's median income is less than ours.
Northampton, no one is quite sure.
I'm surprised.
How, and it's also size-wise, it's usually population-wise, so no, no one's quite sure. Usually the large cities, like Coyoak, you know, Springfield. So Northampton is a surprise to everybody that they are an entitled community, but.
Amherst gets it, because I think that's how they fund their.
Yes, it is, exactly how, but I mean, it's good, it's, it's just of interest to know that, that's how they fund, Northampton funds the Survival Center, the ten grand, that is how they fund them. It's like, you know, not related, but might be interesting.
I'm gonna abbreviate the motion, because I don't think we need to read it as complete. I'm gonna say I move that the finance committee recommend to the full council to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents for the various departments listed under section five, human services, period.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lastly, I think we're doing debt and interest, is that right? Do we have to pay our debts?
Yep.
We were just talking this morning about the difference in, in, you know, this is the interest that we would like to be high, the interest that we make.
Well, it's gone down a little bit every year, it's nice to see. We're down almost, right, so it looks like about eighty grand from last year in the totals. I'm looking at the summary page on age. Principal. What's coming off this year, anything?
We were just talking about that.
Nothing really coming. It's D P.
Headworks.
Yeah, something D P W, it's the seventeen, the last name, and for one of their, that.
Which line?
Yeah. I know I saw Ted Yonkers Water Treatment Plant, Headworks, and Water Treatment Plant.
I was saying.
Those are.
So, one of the D P W, um, sewer treatment improvements is, came off this year. But that's all funded by Enterprise ultimately through their chargeback. And then, um, I believe it did.
Can I help you, sir?
Yes, there's supposed to be a hearing this evening.
I'm going.
His property over on Luke Town.
Planting Board?
Mr. Boyle. Dave Boyle was.
Uh, can you, you know what?
Is there a planting board meeting tonight, or?
I'm gonna go out to the front of the building, and it tells all the, all the.
She has them also on the board.
Yeah, but then all of them are there. Oh, you've got a car.
Yeah, outside, I'll show you, like, it'll tell you where they are.
Now, the high school, where it says seven hundred thousand, which doesn't change, can you explain what that is to this lesser person who doesn't know?
So principal payment on the high school, the first Marley.
And we have to pay for it the same every year?
Well, that's just the way that is structured.
Okay.
Is the even principal payments and interest on the balance, and typically how they're structured.
Okay.
The ones that are odd amounts are, this is almost always the same, like, oh, it's safety, so it's the same amount until it's paid off, until the last year, when there's not that much anymore. And that's typically how they're, they're structured.
How they structure the bonding?
Yeah, we don't, we don't structure even payments, we structure even principal payments. So a lot of people have their mortgages, and they pay fifteen hundred dollars a month, but, you know, three dollars goes to principal, and the rest goes to interest, but we pay more in the beginning in interest, but we always make the same principal payment.
Okay.
That's just how the, the thing is structured. And so there are some new amounts this year, there are these weird numbers, like seventy-one cents. And some of them have to do with the way that anything that's borrowed for basically water or water treatment is done through a program with M W P A T, and they have these weird formulas, and I don't know how they come up with them, but that's, that's just how they are. You know, like, they tell us this is how we're gonna pay, and it's this much principal, this much interest, and this much forgiven, and this much administration, and what have you. And then I also did a refinance last year, if you might recall, or maybe.
I do.
Yep.
And so when we refinanced them, all those nice even seven hundred thousands.
Changed.
Changed, because we, we put them all into one big refinance, and then it's being allocated based on how much was owed on each one of those. That's been a great savings.
So we pay.
You remember that?
Four hundred thousand in interest on the high school per year, and seventy, seven hundred thousand. We pay one point one million to the, to that bond per year? Is that what that is telling me? Am I adding anything?
Yeah, there's, is that actually to, to the high school?
He's looking at this sheet, right?
I'm looking at debt interest in high school.
So that statehouse note, that one ninety-six, that's.
We've got another, what, ten years on the high school?
I think a little bit more than that, because don't forget, she, like, with the high school project, we only borrow as we need it. We borrowed the whole amount at the beginning, which is another cost savings, but.
And the, the statehouse note, is that just a different loan from the other line item?
Right, so I did them at two separate times. I, I borrowed the majority of the project shortly after I got here, because the project was kicking off, interest rates were good, and we were, you know, we were in construction. But she didn't wanna borrow more than.
Right.
Than the project was gonna cost. So then, as, so I borrowed a, a big chunk, I believe it was fourteen million at first. And then we borrowed some short-term borrowing to keep the project moving and figure out, and then when we finally closed out the project, they came to speak to you at the council meeting, and then I knew the exact number that I needed to, to pay off the permit. And so I took all that short-term borrowing, and I put it in a, a new loan, permanent. It will be paid off much faster than the original loan, but it was just, we didn't need to be paying those kind of interest charges of money we weren't spending just yet.
Yep.
And we were also able to increase our bond rating, I'm sure you remember that, which makes us, we, we jumped two, two points, two levels, which makes us very advantageous when you're borrowing, that's why you might have a good.
Oh, your interest is so much less, that's so great.
Yeah, so these are just a lot of things that, you know, we've spent a lot of time working on.
And that statehouse note, I did that because I was being grovel.
That's why it's good to keep stabilization high, because it shows them that if we have an emergency, we can fix it. That's why the bond agencies love us, they don't.
But we didn't go to the bond agencies for those little, those smaller loans, because it's less expensive for you. I hate for the privilege of them judging you.
I like that, that's a good statement.
And, and so, so if you do a statehouse note, you don't have to get, you have to be reviewed by them every couple of years, because you have notes outstanding, but you don't have to do, oh, we're gonna borrow fifteen million dollars, and, you know, did you put money in stabilization this week, you know, did you have a disaster, oh, how can you have? And so, um, we didn't have to do that, and so the issuance cost of something smaller, like a statehouse note, is a thousand bucks versus tens of thousands of dollars in legal opinions and.
That's if you borrow the big ones.
Yeah, you have to do that if you buy a big, but for smaller ones, sometimes you can just, it's sort of administered through the state, and the issuance cost is significant. and the issuance cost is significantly less. Your closing costs are significantly less. So if you can do that in a smaller one, that's great. But when you're doing the huge project, like when you built, borrowed for the, the original, we're building a high school, they can't get away back.
They may want to know where you stand.
Well, also, and I think statehouse notes, they'll only let you go out five years, so I don't think you want to pay back, you know.
They only don't.
Well, it looks good to me.
What, and Melissa, I apologize. You probably explained this to me last week, but what are principal temp loans and why it's, and maybe you just already told us. And why is it so much lower than it has been?
What line are you on?
Oh, principal on temporary loan. So.
Where are you put?
Uh, the debt.
So the, the high.
Debt principal line page, Amy.
The high school was a temporary loan and I, and I was carrying that with some other stuff in my temporary loan line. And then when I permanently borrowed that for a five-year period with a statehouse note, I moved it up. And it, and the payments had to be fit into the five years, so therefore became slightly more aggressive than they had been. And the other temporary note is the, we bought, before you started, like, an ambulance and a dump truck for the D P W and an ambulance for the fire department or the E M T department. And they, they were both partially funded from free cash and, and other sources. And then the rest was borrowed for three years as a way to put aside money for larger capital items that wasn't dependent on how much money did we save last year. So like, let's just plan that we need to spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year for placing larger vehicles. And so this is that ninety thousand and this is the last year of that, that project. And so, you know, hopefully we'll look at doing that again. And if we don't do that again, that's a big part of why we're creating the capital stabilization. So that if we don't actually borrow another, you know, three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollars to, we are putting that money into the capital stabilization so that when we need that, we don't have three hundred thousand dollar vehicle, we can buy that.
Buy it without borrowing.
Right.
Right. But the interest rates are so low and this is a way to sort of keep it in the budget. It doesn't just disappear into rising costs of other things. We should expect it to be there.
Okay.
And there, there are.
And it's always the same, so.
Well, you know, about a hundred thousand in principal and whatever the interest is at the time. And if interest rates go through the roof, then you say, oh, well, then we're going to budget to put it in capital stabilization and plan to pull it out in the same year. So capital stabilization doesn't move necessarily, but we're always making that, we need a hundred thousand dollars for these big purchases.
Yep.
Which isn't, you know, enough, but it's a, it is a start.
It's the beginning of a plan. We didn't have the capital, capital stabilization plan and we created that specifically for that. And there were many years, as some of you are going to know, that we didn't do any capital. So that was part of the whole reason. Like, it's also, you know, not just trying to put stabilization, trying to, you know, save the capital too.
Yep.
And you're, you're preserving that for the big ticket item, the three hundred thousand dollar truck or something. Because we still do capital out of free cash and other sources of loan, but they're smaller amounts.
Right, but.
But there were years we didn't do any even smaller ones.
Yeah, I know. Lease cars even.
But if you look at free cash, you don't always have as much as we've had the last couple of years.
Right, you can't count on it. That's why having a stabil, and I'm sure the bonding agencies like seeing that as well as the regular stabilization.
They look at it as all one.
Do they? Okay.
We're in pretty good shape. I like it. So any more questions on debt and interest? It's pretty simple. I'm just going to make a simple motion. I move that the Finance Committee recommend to the full council to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-one cents for the various departments listed under Section Seven, Debt and Interest.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero. I didn't say this at the beginning, but when we do these discussions, if you want, if there's questions that they need to come back to us to answer, we won't move that particular department that night. We'll do it the next meeting. But let's hope that doesn't happen, but.
Yeah, and, and obviously if you have any ahead of time too, don't, don't wait, don't wait.
Yeah, yeah, that would, that would save us trouble because like the last meeting, if there's something we have to come back, but we're going to have to have another meeting.
Melissa knows that I gave her a slew of questions last week.
She loves answering your questions.
I just want to say that in debt and interest, there are those other funding sources on it. And it's not important that you vote that here in Finance, but you have to do those other funding sources.
Right, I do that. I got them. I just didn't think we needed to do it.
No, you don't, but I just wanted to make sure you.
Is that the breakout?
This is the breakout that Barbara gave me that you sent her.
Right.
I have to, what she's saying is I have to read all of this at the final vote of the council.
Right, you know.
We don't have to read it.
And usually she, so you may be reading some too.
Yes, all of these, there's like, all departments are, you, in other words, when we do the actual council, we'll read this exactly as it is.
It was sent to Barbara just for review so she could be going over it.
But I wanted to have something to read tonight, so.
Can you send me that?
Yes, I can. But the change is Finance Committee recommended as, as opposed to.
And also, you added, Dan, if I'm not mistaken, CPA to the last night, that'll put that on the budget.
Yeah, Barbara, Barbara told us we had to do, well, we didn't have it in there and I think we have to approve that, so.
No, you know, do you, do you feel that, I mean, you're on CPA, you're the chair of CPA, like, like, I, I would prefer not to ask somebody, you know, like Jamie to be here if, if not needed.
No, 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 you don't need them. And we went over the budget. It's a simple budget. It's mostly for administrative.
That's what I thought. I mean, it's pretty cut and dried and you're the chair, so, okay.
That doesn't mean I'll be able to answer the questions. I'm only the chair for the first three months of my life here, so. If Peg has a lot of questions of the chair, I'll probably have to.
Oh, I'll be coming now.
That's a case where if you have questions on CPA, please call Jamie. Seriously, seriously, guys. I'm not that, I'm not that knowledgeable of everything in it as well as I should be. I am going to.
Other than that, I'm not going to, I'm not going to request that she.
No.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Because, you know.
I'm going to forward this to you right now.
Thank you.
So next Tuesday.
Is Public Works, Enterprise, Cultural and Rec.
Mm-hmm. Do we have Department heads coming?
Oh, yes, absolutely. They won't miss it.
So those are a little more detailed and obviously if there's something that can be answered to your satisfaction ahead of time.
Yeah. No, but I mean.
I only look at, as I said, where things change a lot from year to year.
Yeah, but I don't mean, I just mean like other besides John.
So I am going to forward the one message to you, Peg, that has the PDF of the votes. It also has agendas in it and everything.
Perfect.
It's on its way. Okay.
And if anybody else obviously wants a printed budget, just don't, you know, if you hear anybody, just don't, what?
Just us old folks. And inform.
Well, I finally learned how to navigate my own PDF, so.
I forgot my, my iPad tonight, but it didn't matter.
Is the school department's budget online too?
Well.
Under their budget, under their, under the school department?
Not their requested, but their.
Right.
This isn't on there?
No.
It would not be. That would never be on there. That's somebody's request. That would never be part of our budget.
Do they, when they break it out?
Like that, like every single department provides us with that.
Oh, right, that's what that is.
So that would never be part, that's never.
But their budget, their budget in which, which is approved final is on there.
Absolutely. The, what's.
Their own.
You were.
How they.
Yeah, you were just reviewing that.
Right.
But how they spend those twenty million?
The details aren't online?
I would say.
Well, your details are online. That's what I meant. If they're not.
But they would have more details of how they spend, how they're allocating.
I, I, you know what, we could ask them.
Because their budget here is broken out by each school.
But that's the request.
But see, this is just a proposal, so you have to understand.
But they may have the actual aligned according.
Maybe, but in many years, this proposal was nowhere near what they received. So this would have been not worth.
Yeah. But I, I think from a.
But what they receive is broken out like you have it, line by line.
Yep.
And that, I think, well, I think it should be there.
It actually isn't. It has too long.
I'm going to, can it move to adjourn?
Could.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
And actually, once we allocate the money.